This portion of the meeting back to order, and first we'll have a moment of reflection. Thank you, and I'll remind everyone at this point in time, do you have a disclosure of your interest? Make so at this point in time or any point in time through the meeting. And I need a motion for confirmation of the agenda. Move by. I've got Bob Wilhelm, second by Hugh McDermott. Those in favor? Those in favor carried. Okay, next we have consented agenda, consent agenda. And we have items five point one to five point three. And approve the May seventh two twenty in council, two thousand and twenty council minutes. Does anyone want to see anything pulled there? Can I have a motion mover in a seconder? Bob Wilhelm, Ron Eggers. Those in favor? Carried. Okay, we're moving on.
All right.
And now we're going to. Public meetings, hearings and delegations, staff reports, C A O.
Thank you. So through the warden, this is an open session for facility review. County courthouse campus. So taking a look at this, the council. We're asking that we just confirm our operational priorities for the next two quarters. Where where the senior staff can look at our operational recovery activities due to COVID nineteen pandemic emergency. Courthouse security and the courthouse elevator. And that council could approve a special council meeting on October twenty ninth. And that would be a workshop to focus the use of the courthouse campus buildings. Looking for with regard to the elevator, direct any engineering to conduct the necessary investigative and design work from modern elevator in the courthouse. That would be a location option two. Now, if council is thinking of putting any additions on the courthouse or additions to five Huron Street or second floor. You might want to wait for that one until the fall, until you make, you know, if those are still options. Because it may matter where you put the elevator. It was contemplated years ago when you were going to put the archives. In the old archives building and put in actually an addition on two five Huron Street for E M S administration. As well as some other administrative staff. But that was, that was about ten years ago when you had that thought. And then you have since then built a new archives building and built a new E M S building. And that staff engage any engineering to conduct the analysis on five Huron Street. So we could understand the structural integrity if we were to add a second floor in that building for administrative purposes. If council is not, if they're still desirous of that, we will need that structural analysis. And if council decides they're not going to put a second floor in that building, but they would like. A gabled roof or something other with the roof line there other than a flat roof, you still need that structural. Analysis and that's about fifteen thousand dollars. So council did provide. Direction to staff to have us look at administrative space needs. And full service elevator, possible second floor on five Huron Street and parking garage. So taking a look at this, you did have a deferral motion from two seventeen, just provided a little bit of backup. To what you've done in the past and then fast forward to two seventeen, the end of two seventeen, and there was the deferral motion. That was touched on through John McClellan's report at the last council meeting when you talked about. The future of twenty four St. Andrews Street. So looking in that particular resolution, there was a. A firm deferral motion. It did not pass the resolution. It didn't move and second it. To have it end up on the floor. What it did was the deferral motion was moved, seconded and carried. That the courthouse campus report be deferred until the county completed its strategic plan and service delivery review. That's all been done and therefore that deferral motion will come forward. And I know in anticipation of us taking a look at the courthouse campus. We had put seventy five thousand dollars specifically for staff and consulting costs for that project. And those were intended to obtain cost estimates, engineering feasibility reports and design work in contemplation. Of that report returning to council. And I did include a copy of that full report. And so John wrote that report, so he'll be able to walk you through that if if you. So desire and it is supplemental to this particular report. I can confirm looking at the county courthouse, even using the. Modern furniture, which is stackable, it's pretty tight. As I indicated, if you did put a P O A waiting room in here, I would want to normally put twenty five people in there. But that's under normal circumstances. Now we're working with COVID nineteen. So we know that we need, we will have to space those out, but it doesn't change the amount of space that we have. And we know eventually there'll be a vaccine and we'll be able to operate. In the new normal, in a much more efficient manner. So the building is complex as everyone knows, it's it's not easy just to. Pop doorways in and structurally remove walls. And looking at the same factors that they did for space needs. That we want efficiency, we want to make sure we have proper colocation and customer service is a top priority. So we're looking at considering staff and their functions and the allocated space. We'd like to be able to move forward on the centralized reception and a report will come back to council on that. And the new administrative facilities, there was costing there done back into seventeen. Done a bit of an updating on that based on two nineteen. And we look at the elevator in this particular report. And we were told by the engineer that it'll take about four months. To to look at design because it involves architectural, mechanical, electrical, structural disciplines. Tendering and review activities would then take about a month. And then you'd have to have council approval on that. We don't have an overall cost of. How much would it cost to put the elevator in? Because it depends, one, where you put it. And it depends, the engineer indicated it depends on what they find when they look at the pit, when they. Look at the structural issues around the particular location. They did give me a high level estimate of the work involved to get only to the tender stage and it's about fifty thousand. We would fund that from the twenty twenty budget because that money is already there and intended to do that type of design work. And that would give us the necessary documentation for a shovel ready project in case the province comes out and says. We have money to make your buildings more accessible or to address operating in in COVID nineteen. We don't know what those funding streams would be, but at least we would be able to get. The elevator project to a shovel ready stage in twenty twenty if council picks the location. If you want us to look at a couple of locations, fifty thousand isn't going to cover it. That would increase our our budget for that particular. Exercise five five hearing street council asked us at the last meeting. Could we put a second floor on it? We did check with the engineer. We looked at some costing there back from two seventeen. And the engineer advises us from looking at the drawings. There is some. No indication that the building was was in fact designed to hold a future second floor. And the only way to know that is to do the analysis. So the analysis is approximately fifteen thousand dollars. And we do have the money in the budget this year for that particular work as well. So at least we'll give you that option. And I believe it would take about four weeks to get that information. So I'm I'm hoping that still sits in with John's timeline for what he has out there on an R F P. If in fact you wanted to fix the roof on five Huron Street. Because it's unlikely you're going to fix the roof and then decide you want to put a different roof on or a second story. So it's really what you want to do there. We looked at the parking garage, went back and looked at the two seventeen report and some. Some other costing and it really depends on what you do here with your staffing. So if you move staff out, that's going to free up some parking. If you don't, that's fine, we still have it. But if you moved into the five Huron Street. And Service Ontario was not located on this particular campus, that would address your parking. Congestion. And then there is always a very simple policy remedy. To parking lots when you're having staff attend, and that's simply a policy that's that indicates you'd have certain spots. For staff who may need it for accommodation, for physical accommodations. You'd usually have some for for council, but as a as a matter of policy, staff would park at other municipal parking lots. Whether that be the Cooper lot, whether that be another lot that's that's paid parking. But staff would generally park off site. That is a policy. Council could make in order to address. Their congestion here at the county courthouse. It's not been one, I understand that you may not have talked about that today, but. There's always, there's always a policy you can change on that if you wanted to remedy it, no cost, no cost to the corporation. And in terms of twenty twenty priorities and future special council facility workshop. If we were to move, if you want to move forward on the elevator and pick the location. We can move forward on that and then be back in a few months. To be at the tender stage. And we think we'd be able to have that awarded this year if council so chooses if it comes in at a a price you can afford. And if not, then at least if you didn't proceed with it, but you had the R F P document. You could pick that up at another time when funding becomes available. And then your decision is is your location's picked and we can start to plan around that for other building maintenance. And in terms of our twenty twenty work plans. Right now we are really highly focused on COVID nineteen pandemic recovery. We need to ready our buildings for reopening and we're also looking at security measures and. We think that a workshop in the fall would allow council to talk about. You know, twenty four St. Andrews Street, what you want to do there and. You know. We'd be able to include some direction in the twenty twenty one budget if we had this workshop in the fall. So that's a, that's an overview of your report.
Questions? Can't believe there aren't going to be questions. Walter.
I probably should be good. I find this whole thing very frustrating. It's like a deck of dominos here and and you can't really do anything without the whole thing falling down. I thought we we talked the last meeting. About the feasibility of putting a second story on 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 the registry office. And and now at our next meeting, we're still no further ahead. We don't know. All we know is that we're not even sure if it was originally built or not. You know, i- if we knew that, if we knew for sure that an engineer says, no, you can't do that. That solves the whole problem. And I guess I have to look at John. You know. How bad is the roof? Like, does it need to be fixed this year? Or is this something that we're going to have to put that off until next year as well? If if. If we can't do anything, then we might as well fix the roof and we could do that fairly quickly. The elevator, I think, too, we needed aside where we're going to go. And by the report there, it looked, there was an obvious place to put it was probably the best place. And we should move on that and then work on the others. But to to throw everything basically off till October, I I don't think. Number one, that's getting too late in the year to probably do a roof. And if we're going to look at not only. Maybe repairing the roof or putting a new a new type of roof, if we're going to put a whole different type of structure there with a with trusses. That's a whole nother ballgame. So I I I just, I just find myself a little frustrated in this whole process.
Okay, just I'll answer. Your comment there. Last meeting, we did talk about possibly a second story. We did talk about other options. We never did give the exact direction for staff to go out and spend that money to get. The analysis done. That's why it's coming back today.
It is recommended.
Basically, in the fall, it's in the recommendation you to deal today to deal with this building next door. Five Huron Street. Like, let's find out one way or the other, what can be done or can't be done with that facility. In the fall, we would more deal with, and the other thing too, is if you want to proceed with the elevator. We can do that. That's part of the motion here to get the analysis done and it's in the budget to do that. The fall would be more to deal with St. Andrews Street. And and you know, we we know for sure what we're doing over here. And there's something I threw out to John yesterday at the last minute when he phoned me. There's also one thing with COVID nineteen, Service Ontario has gone to more online. So we don't even know for sure. When that rent contract comes up, if they're going to still be a tenant. So that's, you know, I just, you're right, Walter, there's a lot of dominos and. We're just not sure which direction they're going to go, but we're just trying to pick them off. One or two or three in order to get to a point where we can make a substantial decision. It's something we've stalled off for a number of years, but it's time to get moving. Other comments or questions? John, you got anything to add there?
I think Council Kasonberg has a question. I think I know Nick and I are, Nick's doing a lot of work here trying to find out. About other possibilities with roof structures for five Huron. And as I said at the last council meeting, when we had the tender results for the roof replacement project. We have ninety days when that tender closed, which, as I said in the report, you would have to make a decision by. The July second council meeting, whether we're we're going to move forward. This year with that tender for the roof replacement project. So what we're trying to do right now is is after the last meeting. Is find out, number one, can we put a second story on five Huron? And that's always sort of been information that's been passed down from previous staff that. Yes, the building was designed to carry a second story. But as you know, we talked about at the last council meeting is, well, building codes have changed greatly since nineteen fifty and to to two thousand and twenty. So. In order to to find out and we sent, we had any engineering, they've located the original plans for that building. And as Laurie has said, there's no indication on those plans that the building was designed to carry a second story. So. In order to find that out, we need to do a structural analysis on that particular facility. As well as we're finding out with looking at different roof structures. If you want to put trusses and things like that on, we have six rooftop H V A C units on that building. And those are due for replacement in the next few years. They're at the end of their lifespan. If you're looking at putting a different roof structure on there, what you need to do is either. Reduce the number of H V A C units on there and then centrally locate them on the roof. And you would still have within your roof structure, a portion of flat roof where those units are. They're natural gas units, they need to be vented. And you would basically have a parapet within your roof structure there, which would still be a flat roof. With trusses, again, it's a new design, moving the H V A C units, that's a new design, different loading. You need to have a, as part of the structural analysis, we'd be asking the engineer if we were to change the roof. Are the outside walls able to carry a different roof structure? So that's about all I have to add. As I say, we're continually trying to find information. On other options that we can do there and. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Todd? Todd?
Yeah, so I just want to, I just want to ask a like a really fundamental question because as you know. I I personally believe that our time in the courthouse building is coming to an end and we should be looking at a dedicated new. County administration building. In light of that worldview, obviously, there's a question about this report that that we have to understand. And it relates to some extent to sunk costs, right? We have history, we have tradition, and we have costs at the courthouse that we've, you know, invested taxpayer dollars in over the years. The big question that I have today relates to the elevator and its essentiality. Do we need to do that? Because when we do that elevator, then we wind up with more sunk cost. It's going to make it much less desirable to be open minded to other possibilities. I will say that I have almost no interest in seeing us adding a second story to the Service Ontario building. I I think, again, part of my worldview has us moving out of the city of Stratford and into a dedicated county facility. So to continue to ramp up that building just seems like kind of productive move to me. And it's not something that I would be in favor of. But with regards to the elevator, that's a critical question. I want to understand what our obligations and our sense of that is with regards to either sustaining the current building. Or making the the building more attractive for other tenants or for sale, should we choose it down the road?
Laurie?
Thank you through the warden. I will tell you that it's absolutely fundamental, critical. That we have a functioning elevator that people can operate on their own right now. We have to have a staff member with this lift. We have to pay a staff member to be here. Announce other duties as assigned and it takes many other people. To operate that lift throughout the week. And but right now you you're paying somebody as part of their job to run people up and down the floors on that lift. We know that that, and I believe we've had inquiries before where we've had. People claim human rights that they, you know, that they can't go up on their own. They have to have somebody assist them. Go from floor to floor. We are landlords in this building. You have the court, the courtroom on the third floor. We can't close off the floors. We have to be able to efficiently move people from one floor to the next. And then, you know, save and accept all the cleaning aspect of it. But if you leave this building, regardless of who rents this building, the county rents it out after. We need an elevator. There's there's no question about this particular building. It's due, it's way overdue. But an elevator is a top priority, absolutely.
Rhonda?
Well, this topic has been around for an awful lot of years and as Walter says, we're going around and round and circles here. We need to come to a decision. I do agree with Todd. I think we're throwing good money after bad. Trying to put a second addition on a building that was built in the nineteen. There's going to be an awful lot of structural things that you're going to have to do to it. Shouldn't take that money and renovate the Service Ontario. We give them notice. We we utilize that building, we put the elevator in. Laurie said, regardless of what we do, if we try to rent this building, we got to put an elevator. We can't afford to put an elevator in a building and then turn it around and build a new facility as well. So we got to do one or the other. So and we try to sell it as is, I'm not even sure who's going to buy it. Because they have to make it accessible. So it it, we're going to put a condondrum here to figure out what to do. But I think we move forward with the elevator, the new roof on, we put new offices in the Service Ontario. And we keep utilizing the building that we have.
Questions or comments? I see Daryl.
I will. For sure. Can you guys hear me or no?
Better than the last couple of seconds it was cut before.
I can't call in for whatever reason, it won't accept the codes.
Okay, so you're, you've got your face closer to your computer mic.
Okay, we're good now, though. And I'll echo Rhonda there very much in line.
Walter, I see your hand.
Yeah, I think just with regard to the elevator and the comments that Todd made. The one thing you have to remember that that is the county court system that is there. And if we don't provide the a system there that's accessible with a usable elevator. I don't know what our chances are that we would be risking the courts pulling out of Perth County. And say going to Kitchener or London where there's already a court system there. Like, if you go back in history, at one time, that was the whole, the whole gist of of why the courthouse was built. You had to provide a county court system for the residents of that county. I I agree with with, you know, Rhonda, like this elevator's been around for, gosh, I don't know how many years. And I think it's time, time to move on it. With regards to the second story on on the registry office. The only reason that that I think you would look at it. You know, for the engineering is whether you can do it or not is, yeah, like it's part of your plan. Are we going, you know? And are we going to utilize that facility or not? And if it can't be done, then there's no sense wasting any more time on it. Put a roof on it and be done with it. But until we know if that's in the cards. You know, it's hard to make a decision. And I know Todd is saying, let's just move right out of Stratford. If that's what everybody's agreeable to, then, yeah, like, like, hey, just do it, don't do anything. But you still have to put an elevator in the courthouse, I'm afraid.
Other, Bob Wilhelm?
I agree with Laurie that it doesn't matter whether we own the building, sell it or rent it. It has to be accessible and we need to move on with this. Elevator and and get one in place and. Come up to twenty twenty. The. I tend to agree that let's not waste money on on the Service Ontario building. And leave it as is, get the roof on, because I think as John indicated. You're still going to have quite a section of flat roof. And if you go with trusses and then you're spending money on on whether the. Walls will carry it and and get engineering for loading. I think the big thing I see is that. We have to get off our butts and make a decision on twenty four St. Andrews. Either we sell it, we tear it down, build something else there. But let's do something with twenty four St. Andrews. It's ridiculous that we have that building sitting there and this council won't make a decision to do something with it.
Other comments? Do they have a hand up there? Daryl, Daryl?
Now you guys can hear me there?
Yep.
Yeah, I'll echo there with Bob. I I personally would like to go into point of course in Andrew Street myself, see what's there. I I would like to walk through, of course, I know we're in a little hard times, but we can still remain social distancing. Maybe it's something we could do a couple at a time. And just start getting us counsel through there so we have a better feel. I personally like to arrange that we go through. Thank you.
Bob Wilhelm?
I spoke with Laurie yesterday and I suggested that the council go through all of the buildings. Not just get a good idea of the courthouse, have a layout of the courthouse. And have a clear understanding of what the courts do and and the judges' chambers, et cetera, on all three levels. Tour St. Andrews and tour the Service Ontario building. I think it's important that this council has a clear understanding of actually what the buildings are and what they do and the limitations on them.
Other comments? Todd?
Sorry, I come off mute here. So I, you know, I, all I wanted to understand was the essentiality of the elevator. I am assured by both my colleagues and by our interim C A O that that regardless of what happens. Regardless of a decision the council makes moving ahead, we need an elevator in that building. So from that perspective, I'm I'm comfortable. It's unfortunate because it's another sunk cost. And it will lead potentially to more debate. More concern about how it looks to taxpayers when we talk about a dedicated new county administration building. But it doesn't change the fact, as as Laurie points out, that it's essential. So from that perspective, I think we move forward. I I'm starting to hear enough of a consensus from comments of others. That with regards to the Service Ontario building, we should just get that roof done. that, um, with regards to the, uh, Service Ontario building, we should just get that roof done as is and, and move forward. And, uh, so I'm going to recommend or to support something for that. But I will state unequivocally that I remain committed to pursuing a process of understanding about moving the county administration out of the city of Stratford.
Doug, did you have your hand up?
Doug?
Yep, there he goes. Oh, yep, you're good. Not hearing him. He may have to take his earphones off. You're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Unplug your, unplug your earphones.
Should he call in?
Still not hearing. Do you want to try calling in?
Okay, I think.
I'll just, I'll just let you know that calling is.
Okay, there, a little bit.
Uh, was that him or is that?
No, I thought that was someone.
We heard.
Oh, that was Daryl.
Yeah, we can't, we can't hear you, Doug. I can't, I can't read lips.
Can we read lips?
Do we have sign language? We need to provide that, you know?
Yeah, we need to do something.
Okay, I, I, I can't, uh, hear Doug at all.
He's gone now.
He just left.
He's probably calling.
He may be calling. Uh, any other comments with regards to this discussion? I'm not seeing any hands. A couple of comments from myself. Here regardless, uh, the elevator is a necessity. You're not going to lease that space. You're not going to sell this building. You're not going to do anything with it if you don't have an elevator there. And after COVID-19, I'm thinking you're going to be hard pressed to find a buyer because there's really very few people who would want to buy it. And I don't see where they're going to want to buy because they're not going to have any more money than we are. Uh, Service Ontario, uh, if we don't want to pursue a second floor, that's fine with me. That was just something that got thrown out there. And the other thing was with the structural study was if you wanted to change the roof, but if everybody's happy with a flat roof, we can go ahead and get the roof fixed. That's not a big deal.
That report will come next meeting.
Uh, we, we've already got the report back in the tender, so we just.
We'd have to list it as an item.
Okay, so we'd have to bring that back next, next meeting to officially approve. Uh, but we can do a study, we can get the study initiated on the elevator.
Yeah.
If you're so inclined to want to do that, if you want to forget about the study next door, we can do that. And St. Andrews, I echo the comments that we have to do something with that building. Um, I'm going to just refer to a comment John and I talked yesterday. We've talked a couple, three different days on this. And to do anything with that building is like putting lipstick on a pig. Is that not what you said, John? He's smiling, so he's agreeing. Anyway, uh, I've got a motion here.
Do you want me to speak to the option here for the elevator just so they understand?
Do you want it, do you want it, Laurie, to speak to the options on the elevator? Or just wants to go, you've seen the two options, right?
Option number two, it's.
So we're talking option number two.
Boardroom, H R.
So that is up to the front of, of, on St. Andrews Street, boardroom.
Boardroom.
H R.
H R, witness room.
And the witness room upstairs.
Right there.
Which is right over here.
Yes. That's the option, that's the recommended option from the engineer.
So I got a motion here and I'm going to read it off. County council, and I'm going to slightly adjust it as to what I'm hearing. County council receives a facility review, county courthouse campus report and, uh, county council confirms the following corporate operational priorities for the next two quarters. And that would be operational recovery activities due to COVID-19 pandemic emergency, courthouse security and courthouse elevator. Uh, county council approves a special council meeting for Thursday, October 29th at 9:00 a.m. for a workshop to, for a focus on all of the facility. And then we should have all the answers we need and the pricing and everything else.
And see whether you want to move out of the, out of this building.
And then that maybe include moving this, leaving this building and.
New, new building somewhere.
New building somewhere else. Somehow I don't think the rate payers are going to think that's a very good idea at this point, but. Uh, and the staff be directed to engage any engineering to conduct the necessary investigative and design work for a modern elevator in the courthouse. Location, option number two. Everybody understand that? Do I have a mover? Bob Wilhelm, do I have a second or? You McDermott? Those in favor? Let's carry unanimously.
Jim, I have a question.
Yep.
Can, uh, Laurie tee up, uh, times in the next couple of weeks on, uh, set up tours of the buildings? Uh, for address the cards?
I already have, but.
We will do that. Through the warden, absolutely yes.
I just got to add one thing. So if you did want to do something to 24 St. Andrews Street, you would also have to include another, another elevator. If you were to fix that up to use that facility. Is that not correct, John? You'd have to put an elevator there?
Um, I think what we, if you wanted to sort of, uh, use the basement of that, uh, uh, you would likely want to tie in like an elevator. Um, you'd like, I, I know in the past it's been looked at, uh, an elevator that would be on sort of an addition and service both levels of five here on street and 24 St. Andrew. But, uh, yeah, there's, you would likely need, uh, an, an elevator in there if you were to want, wanting to use, utilize both floors.
Okay, so we'll deal with that in the fall. But I'm just making that up, bringing that up now so it's not a surprise.
And the last one is 74.
Um, yeah, I know, but we're not going to do that, but apparently. So what we are going to do is we're going to set up meeting times in the next couple, three weeks. Well, hopefully before next council meeting, but, you know, it's not a real necessity, I don't think at this point.
Yeah, I will make sure.
And the last thing we had to deal with was, uh, engine, any engineering to conduct analysis on five year in street. And I'm assuming that you're all thinking that that's a no-go. And just to go ahead and fix the roof, is that a general consensus?
So we'll bring that.
Okay, so next meeting, the report's going to come back as to going ahead and replacing the roof on five year street, which we already got the tenders on. And you can vote on it at the next meeting, June the 4th. Does that work for everybody? Seeing a bunch of nodding, okay. Moving on. Jim? Yep. Have we ever thought about moving our planning people into the basement of five here in street? Like we have two stories at five here in street, right? We have a main floor and we have a basement. I haven't been in the basement. Todd probably hasn't been in the basement. It's a dungeon, but if you, if, if you, if there's no sense coming to Mitchell or Rostock or Fullerton, they can have an office upstairs where if they have to meet the public, they come up to it. Like that was maybe Rhonda's suggestion when she said move everybody into that building. Two floors there. It, it's, it's already there. I know a bunch of guys want to go see it, um, because they've never been in there. I'd been in the basement. We did the tour, I don't know, five years ago, I guess, when I started. So there is two stories already at five year in street. You don't have to build up, you can go down. That, that can be one of the options that come back in the report.
We'll include it as an option.
At the next meeting, and that will be possibly one of the options. Again, accessibility may be a factor, but it can be an option. Anyway, we're going to move on. Planning services, and I see David up there, he's back. Hello, David?
Hello, Mr. Warden, members of council. Hey. So, uh, Mr. Warden, members of council, uh, following report, uh, concerns an application for modification to an existing draft plan of subdivision, uh, file number NP-18-02. Uh, just as background to this request, um, the draft plan of subdivision, uh, that I've noted, uh, was reviewed and considered by county council in 2018 and was approved in draft format on August 2nd, 2018. Uh, a previous modification to the existing draft plan approval, uh, was approved by county council uh, later on August 1st, 2019, um, which, uh, D I detailed in our background in our report, uh, the modifications that were done at that time. Um, the request that the, uh, developer has brought forward, uh, would partition the existing stage two uh, into a revised, uh, smaller stage two as well as a new stage three. Uh, there would be no impact to, uh, and, and blocks and any other features proposed to be developed uh, through the existing draft plan approval. Uh, the request of modification would simply partition the existing stage two uh, to allow for more, uh, immediate development and potential immediate registration uh, of the new stage two as proposed. Uh, so the new stage two, uh, as detailed in the revised, uh, uh, draft, draft plan, uh, provided as a schedule to our report, uh, would contain block one and block two. Block one, uh, being home to approximately six townhouse units and block two, uh, being a block containing, uh, a range of, um, a number of units for multi-residential development. And this is, uh, shown on, on the attached schedule E to our report. Uh, we found in the course of our review that there would also be, and in, in talks with, uh, North Perth Public Works staff, uh, that there would be no impact on the, um, the servicing requirements for the development should modification be approved. Uh, as noted, there is no change to the number of units for the development uh, or any other features, uh, aside from, uh, the proposed staging of what, of what could potentially be developed first in this case. Uh, we found that the request of modification maintains consistency with the provincial policy statement as well as the policies of the County Perth Official Plan. As such, the planning department is able to support the proposal. Uh, the requested change to the existing draft plan, uh, was, uh, recommended for approval to county council by, uh, the council of the municipality of North Perth uh, at its meeting on May 11th, 2020. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, council may have regarding, uh, this request.
Questions for David? Not seeing any hands there whatsoever. Okay, so I have a motion. The Perth County Council receives the application for modification of draft plan of subdivision approvals by M H B C Planning Limited on behalf of Nickel Properties, file number NP-18-02. And Perth County Council approves the request for change to the conditions of the draft plan approval NP-18-02 to permit a revised stage two and creation of a new stage three on the draft plan. Moved by Doug? Question Doug or move? Okay, Doug's moving. Second by Todd. Uh, Todd Casenberg.
Kelly.
Or Kelly. Doug Callum, oh, sorry, Doug Callum was the mover.
Okay.
And Todd was a second or?
Okay.
Those in favor? She's carried. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Quick question for you. Uh, about a month ago, I got some stuff from Minister Clarke's office with regards to how we might proceed with land division and public meetings. And they were supposed to forward more documentation. I forward what I had on to Sally and I have never received a thing since. Have you got anything on that? Or has there been discussion on how we might proceed?
Uh, through the warden, uh, for your question, Mr. Warden, and for council's information, um, there have been internal talks between planning, uh, I T and other staff members regarding how we can proceed on this. Uh, it's my understanding that, uh, very recently, uh, one of our local municipalities, municipality of North Perth has, uh, started to implement a method for hosting, uh, planning at public meetings through remote measures. Uh, I, I just to update council on where we are at. Um, we have had a couple of internal meetings with I T to address this. Uh, we are aware of the letter from Minister Clarke and, uh, we have another meeting happening tomorrow, uh, between departments to, uh, try to forge a path forward, um, in a direction on, on how we're going to, uh, address, uh, public meetings for county level applications. So that's all I can say at this point, um, to, to address that matter, only, only that we're, we're, we're working on it right now.
Perfect. Uh, my only comment, as Minister Clarke said that we can do that because I haven't seen where he's actually given the blessing for that.
Um, through, through the warden for council, um, our understanding from the department's perspective is that the, the ministry has essentially left it up to the municipalities to create their own process such that it would satisfy the requirements of the planning act. Uh, so what you may see jurisdiction to jurisdiction may be slightly nuanced and different depending on the local conditions. So, uh, as mentioned, we are working on it. Uh, there's internal discussions going on and we're hoping to have something in place very soon. Uh, and we've also been in talks with our, our local partners at, at the local municipalities as well to, uh, to help, uh, get a system put in place.
Okay, thanks, David. Uh, okay, moving on. We have Meredith for a job. Filing.
Good morning, county council. So I just have, I know I said my goodbyes last, uh, council meeting, uh, and here I am again. And I'm going to be here again on June 4th. So, um, I prematurely, uh, said my goodbyes, but I'm here today just to quickly give you an update as per, uh, councillor Kasonberg and councillor Wilhelm's request, the last meeting, that we consolidate the, uh, two surveys, uh, that we completed for, uh, for our business community. So the goal of the survey was to better understand the types of support needed for our business community in order to develop programming and better advocate on their behalf, uh, during this pandemic. So from March 19th to March 29th, we had 258 businesses complete our survey, the first survey. And as the survey results were coming in, we were developing our programming. Then on, uh, April 8th, we, we launched our second survey and ran that survey till, uh, May 1st and we had 133 businesses. So some of the key observations from survey one, uh, for, for most businesses, the initial impact of COVID-19 was very significant. It was growing fast. Most businesses anticipated that they were going to need, have difficulty, uh, making ends meet and, uh, needed, uh, needed finance. Seventy percent of those businesses cited funding was the greatest need from the federal and provincial governments. This is not loans, they're looking for grants. Uh, the primary role of financial support should be delivered from the provincial and federal levels uh, of government and less so from local municipalities. Just despite that many suggested that property tax assistance and communication uh, were two ways for local municipalities to assist. And the key observations from survey number two, uh, was that COVID-19 pandemic continued to be a significant and steadily increasing, um, on our business community. And they were, the businesses were continuing to modifying, modifying their operations and some were completely closed. Most businesses respond to layoffs, emergency loans and complete shutdowns. Operations would be in action, um, operations would be in actions that they would take. And then many businesses have modified their operations to adapt in some way. And businesses have significantly, had significantly downsized their workforce. So each of the survey, surveys captured a snapshot in time and the programs and support continue to evolve since that, um, since we completed the survey. We do intend on doing a follow-up survey later on in the summer with the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. So after we launched our very first survey, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus staff reached out to us. We want to use our survey as a benchmark and a template for the entire caucus to use. So the 14 municipalities, 10, um, 14 municipalities across the entire Western Wardens Caucus, 10 of them use our survey and we had a total of 168, sorry, 1638 businesses complete the survey uh, across the counties. And again, it was echoing the same results, provincial and federal government, financial aid. They needed money, 41%, 41% of businesses were looking for tax payment deferral than municipal governments. Um, and then also what the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus followed our lead again. We developed the second survey and, uh, similar results across all, all the counties. So we had, uh, an increase actually at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus for the second survey. So 2,221 businesses completed the survey. Uh, the impact on COVID-19 on the economy in, uh, Western Ontario has been significant. Thirty-four percent of businesses are temporarily closed, temporarily closed. A small number of businesses, two percent, identified that they were permanently closed. And this is across the entire Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, so that's from Windsor-Essigs all the way to Seminole County, which is Barry. And, uh, so many noted, um, the businesses, sorry, the number of businesses that have accessed government support was very low across the Western region at only fifty-seven percent. So again, the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus is going to work with County of Perth staff as we move forward, and we're going to survey the businesses just to kind of keep, keep track come the summer. So they're thinking July-ish. Again, our business community is really burnt out from surveys. Uh, as you can see, our numbers decreased on the second survey, so I, I'm really pushing for the later. Although we do wanna collect this data, I just don't want our business community, they trust us right now. Uh, sorry, they trust us, not now, they always have trusted us, and we have a really good relationship with them. And I just, I don't want them to feel fatigued and burnt out from surveys. So I think we should just take a timeout right now and follow up later on. So I've been pushing and advocating that at the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus table.
Questions for Meredith? Well, it must've been a good report. I don't see any hands moving. Further to Meredith, should we talk about our roundtable on the first of June, or is that?
No, absolutely. Um, so, uh, we've, the Minister Hardeman, Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, and Randy Pettipie, we're gonna be hosting a roundtable discussion on June 1st. So any counselors that would be interested in joining, um, they're more than welcome. I can send out the invite. Right now, I, we need to submit our questions prior to the event, uh, so they can have a better understanding and be able to add, answer our questions more efficiently and effectively. It's really focused on the ag industry, so we've invited, um, the Ontario, a representative from the Ontario Pork Congress, the Christian Farmers Organization, the National Farmers Union, and the OFA to participate in that meeting with us. And it's really talking about the importance of agriculture across the province, but particularly in Perth County, so making sure that our agriculture community is not getting forgotten and the supports are in place. So, um, I'll send out the invite to all of County Council after this meeting. It is invite-only, so please don't share that. It's just for our folks, so, uh, let's take this opportunity to have a constructive, proactive meeting with Minister Hardeman and, uh, and Randy, please.
Any comments about that? So it is imperative you have your questions in in advance. There's not gonna be any off-the-wall questions, and that's kind of the way it's set up and designed. They don't like surprises. And as far as the representatives, uh, when Meredith and I talked about this, she wanted to know who we'd get for representatives, so let's go right to the top and get Keith Curry. And he emailed back instantly and was all over that, and he's gonna, it's gonna be the president of the OFA, not just a, uh, a regional person. We got the president coming. I'm not sure about the NFU and the Christian Farmers yet, but uh, Meredith's deal was doing a fine job. So I have a motion here. Perth County Council receives the COVID-19 in Perth County during the impact on business community report for information. Walter, second by Todd Casenberg. Those in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks, Meredith.
Thanks, guys.
And now we're gonna move on to POA. And is Linda gonna go online, or are you gonna do that?
She went on.
Linda just jumped off. She's a, uh, Okay, sorry, Linda has a phone call with the province.
Okay.
So she's gone.
So I, I will quickly speak to this, um, through the warden. So Linda's just doing an operational update, and we do expect, the problem with some of this stuff is, is they don't close it for a significantly long time. Uh, there still's work to do every month. She wanted to note to you, the charges filed, there is a reduction during the, the pandemic, the, the shelter in place, um, because not as many people are out there. But certainly, um, I think there was a pickup during the long weekend in our, our speeding and those sorts of things. And, um, we expect business to pick up as businesses open and there's more people out on the road, because that's the lion's share of where those, those, um, uh, charges come from. So we do know that we've had no in-person proceedings here, obviously we're still closed. And we do expect that, um, uh, we'll get something before July the 6th to say, do you have to be back open for July the 6th and ready? She is working with a group, uh, planning underway with the Senior Justice of the Peace to facilitate audio appearances for judicial pre-trials and early resolution pleas. And she's part of a working group as well with other POA managers. And, um, they are looking at safety standards as well from the ministry. Uh, I'm not convinced that we've seen those yet, but we're hoping that, uh, with the call that she has today and her working group, that we get that sooner than later. Really, it was a matter of to be able to show you the fines collected and the charges filed. I can certainly have her follow up on any specific questions that are operational that you may have, because she's the expert on that service.
Any questions with regards to the report? Pretty straightforward, I think, for the most part. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the POA operational update report for information. Move by. Bob Wilhelm, second by Doug Ayke. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Moving on. John? Yep, he was there. John coming back?
Uh, he's, should be, he's fallen off. There he is.
You're up.
Okay, great. Thank you, Warden H. Simpson. Good morning, council. First report is tender results Perth Line 36 Road Project. We included in the 2020 Capital Roads budget to the reconstruction of Perth Line 36 from Road 125 to Road 135, which is approximately four kilometers long. Uh, this project's gonna include pulverizing the existing pavement structure, plowing in shoulder tile, and recycling the pulverized pavement, and then adding a lift of hot mix afterwards. Uh, we had estimated, uh, project budget of $1,018,000. I just wanna note that for this project, we have not put out separate tenders for the recycling work and the hot mix work. Uh, why we did that is timing and scheduling are critical to this project, and that's best handled by dealing with one general contractor. Uh, we closed the tender on April 28th. We had five bid submissions, and that's tabled before you in the report. Uh, the low bid was from Cocoa Paving Inc. in the amount of $823,000 plus HST. The low bidder has certainly performed roadwork for us in the county, and their workmanship has ranged from good to satisfactory. Uh, we, as I said, we did include, uh, $1,018,000 for the reconstruction of Perth Line 36 in this year's budget. Um, if actual costs and our estimates hold the line, we expect that, uh, those, the construction costs will be $837,484, which includes the county's portion of HST, and that means we'll be under budget by about $180,000. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Question for John. Scan all the faces. I don't see any questions. I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the tender results Perth Line 36 Public Works Roads Report and the Council Award Contract 2020 dash oh three one dash oh five dash pulverized dash recycled mix, hot mix to cocoa paving in the amount of $823,000 plus HST. Move by Walter. Second by Hugh McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie. Okay, John?
Thank you. Uh, next report is pretty much a, a housekeeping item. Uh, it's the, uh, Boundary Road Agreement renewal with the, the region of Waterloo and the County of Perth. All of our Boundary Road Agreements are in need of updating. We started last year with the County of Huron, if you recall. And Chuck Blanchard, our Roads Operation Coordinator, has, uh, taken up this task in, in updating the one with the region of Waterloo. So this agreement, uh, basically mirrors the old agreement. We have approximately six and a half kilometers of Boundary Road with the region of Waterloo. That includes portion of Perth Line 56, Perth Line 43, and Perth Road 101. We also have, uh, three, um, structures, one bridge and two concrete culverts, uh, as well on those Boundary Road sections. Capital and reconstruction costs of all Boundary Roads are shared equally between both municipalities. And we've consulted with both the region of Waterloo and legal, and we're recommending, uh, that the term be until September 30th, 2027. Um, we can certainly amend this agreement or terminate it with the minimum 120 days' notice. And as I said, uh, it just basically been reformatted from the old one to updated to, to, to present standards. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for John? Not seeing any hands. Takes a little longer to scan when they're in that.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion. Perth County Council receives the Waterloo slash Perth Boundary Agreement Renewal Public Works 2020 Report, and the council renews the revised Regional Waterloo-Pirth County Boundary Road Agreement until September 30th, 2027. And further, that bylaw be drafted, authorized, and the warden and clerk to execute the agreement and all required documentation. Move by. Bob Wilhelm, second, Hugh McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie. Thank you. Anything else, John?
Uh, nothing further, Warden H. Simpson.
Thanks. Okay, move on. Council reports. Do we have anybody that wants to bring anything up there? Not seeing anything. Uh, bylaws? We have a couple. First one being the bylaw 3758 dash 2020. Be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this 21st day of May, 2020. Move by. Todd Casenberg, second Hugh McDermott. Those in favor? Let's carry it. And we have bylaw. Same one?
No, dude.
No, it's two. That bylaw 3759
Yeah.
Dash 2020, be read a first, second, and third time, and finally pass this 21st day of May, 2020. Move by. Bob Wilhelm, Rhonda Agen, second. Those in favor? It's carried. And then we have bylaw 3760 dash 2020, being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding of council.
If you didn't do, notice that's the confirmation.
Oh. Okay, notice the motion. See if we didn't have anyone.
Okay, other business?
Other business? Gerald? Can't hear you. I'm mute. I'm mute.
Now you can hear me. I believe this is the, the place to bring this up, and I, I just wanna touch on it a bit in regards to COVID-19 there. We, we, we kind of find ourselves here talking about new normals, and I heard today about vaccines and everything, and I just wanna bring to the table here and stuff that I, I believe we should be careful as council and staff for that matter, that we don't start feeding too far into something that is mandatory at this time, and we watch what we see. There's, it's getting to be a pretty hot topic. For example, Greensville Landarch from Eastern Ontario just released their numbers. It was a harder-hit area, if you would. They have about 170 people, close to 400 cases. Out of the deaths there, though, the average death age was 87 from the COVID. It's about a 99.8% recovery at least. We just find ourselves talking about new normals and new going forward, and I just wanna make sure we don't get too far into that. And we, we better make sure what the new normal is, and before we just start talking about new normals, that we all agree on it. I'm not playing anything down here. Um, as a farmer, I, I, I deal with protocols and that kind of stuff all the time, but we just, we need to be careful, and I wanna make sure that we don't find ourselves in a sling and just start going with a norm that really isn't a norm. Again, I'm not playing anything down, but numbers are coming forward, and, uh, it's not maybe quite as much as what the media is meaning to be. Not, not taking this serious. I do my due diligence every day. I have a family business. But we need to be careful, and I just wanted to bring that forward.
Point taken. Any other comments or announcements there? Not seeing any. Confirmatory bylaw. The bylaw 3760 dash 2020 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the corporation, the County of Perth, at its regular meeting held May 21st, 2020, is read a first, second, and third time, and finally passed May 21st, 2020. Move by. Matt Duncan, second by Doug Ayke. Those in favor? Let's carry it. I have a motion here that County Council meeting be adjourned at 10:40. Move by. Doug Calum, second by Hugh McDermott. Those in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Sometimes this is a bit of a challenge for me to see hands and stuff, but, uh, sorry, Doug, I just couldn't hear you. You weren't the only one at the beginning, uh, the lady from the help unit couldn't get on right either. And I've had that issue, and Bob could attest to that. There was one day I couldn't unmute for a month of money.